Let's get together.
You Peter?
Yeah.
I did not, I have not. Yeah, we got five. Come on, go get the list. Get it on the way back. We're gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting for Cherokee Village to order June 26, 2025. If you wouldn't, wouldn't mind please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Observe a moment of silence, please. Ms. Clerk, roll call, please.
Harrison.
Here.
Rachel Tatum. Thompson.
Here.
Martin. Jeff Tatum. Low.
Here.
Ishmael.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Mayor and clerk in attendance.
Before we approve the agenda tonight, I actually need to add two things to the agenda. One would be a special use permit C 2025-12, and one would be the consideration for the police department to purchase two vehicles, which would be new business number six. And a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Ishmael, seconded by Ms. Harrison to approve tonight's agenda with the, with the additions. All in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All disapprove like sign, motion passes. That was last month. Yeah, we did, we did the scholarship award last month. The Fire Department Scholarship Award, that was last month. Any public comments or questions on the listed agenda items? Had a little, had a minute to look over the minutes from the May 5th and the May 15th. Be the May 5th special council meeting and the May 15th regular council meeting. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ishmael to approve the minutes of both meetings from May. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign, motion passes, thank you. I apologize for being a little bit out of cattywampus today. I've been out this morning for a family medical and just walked in the door about 20 minutes ago, so. We did have a correspondence. We actually just received this, was it today? I believe it was today, wasn't it, from Mr. Trey Steimel? Anyway, it, I was gonna talk about it in my mayor's report, but Arkansas, or Cherokee Village was awarded the ninth, to be the ninth safest city in Arkansas by SafeWise. So we got, we received a letter today from Mr. Trey Steimel. Says, "Dear Chief Monty Lane and law enforcement officers, I am honored to have such an exemplary law enforcement agency serving our district. Your dedication to ensuring public safety and fostering community connections has earned the impressive distinction of being ranked among the top 10 safest communities in the entire state. This prestigious accolade is a testament to your professionalism, vigilance, and the proactive measures you implement to ensure such secure environment for all residents. It also reflects the strong partnership and mutual trust established between the police department and our community members, which is vital in maintaining the safety and harmony we all cherish. Thank you for your tireless dedication. The Cherokee Village Police Department demonstrates what it means to serve with integrity and honor. Sincerely, Trey Steimel, State Representative, District 2." So thank you to the police department. Had just a minute to look over the financials. I was, we had a little bit of an uptick since last month, so. We're still on track with expected income, with, in expected revenue, let me rephrase that, so.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would say, just because being a part of budget committee, now that we're at June and we've gone through half the year, and you know, we look at some of the budget items and we say, okay, maybe they should be spending at 50% of their budget, but sometimes that's not the case, because bills come in only once a year. But for the budget items that are coming in at 192%, or well over 100%, because they've, you know, chosen to spend a line item and they're probably gonna move money later, I just want to encourage the departments to put forth the letters to let's, earlier in the year, get line items, you know, if they need a line item increase to move from one line item to another, we make it official and get the numbers, you know, intact.
Yeah. As I said, as general, as generally speaking on the whole picture, we're, we're doing really well. We've, so far, we're underspending as a totality, so I mean, we're doing pretty good as, as far as that goes.
But just to be accurate, you know, be accurate on the budget lines, on the line items, I mean.
Yeah. Hmm, mayor's report. Oh, and I did not print it out, so I'm gonna try to do this off the top of my head. We took propane, we took bids for our propane contracts from five local companies. We received the, the one that was received for the, the, you know, the, the least amount was for MFA, so we went with MFA with our propane bid. Cherokee Village is ranked as the number nine safest cities for 2025 in Arkansas by Bruma Martins, Public Relations Specialist at SafeWise. They show our population at 4,943 is what they showed, population in Cherokee Village at. We're getting close to that 5,000 mark. I talked to the R.D. engineer about the project out front, the highway, the highway bridge. He told me that the construction equipment will be starting, they'll be coming back and starting on the 7th, but he said they've pushed their actual road closure back to the 14th. He said, because they're gonna take about a week to get their equipment moved in, get the guys in place, and kind of do some side work, so. I'm hoping, I'm, I'm just happy they're not gonna have the highway blocked during our 4th of July like it was last year. It's gonna make travel a lot easier. Was there anything, what'd we talk about Monday?
We were talking about maybe some additional matting.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna, yes, I did talk to him also about the, the gravel that washed in from the flood on the completed side, they're gonna be looking at that, and also the washing where it's scouring the dirt out from around the pillar on, which would be this side, on the city hall side of the creek. He said they're gonna put some erosion matting back in there. He said when the construction company comes back in, they're gonna work on the, work on that to keep the erosion down. We talked about the, talked to, you know, Mr. Kendrick at the Waste Managements. One thing we're gonna start getting out there, I don't remember what the, off the top of my head, I don't remember the exact date that he said, but it seemed like it was toward the end of this year. They're gonna be transitioning into what they, we call them garbage cans, they call them totes, but they won't be transitioning into their totes, the waste management type totes, because they're gonna, they're gonna go to the side load trucks, the ones that actually have the arms that come out and clamp onto the trucks and dump into the side where it can be operated by one person from the cab of the truck without having to have a person getting out in the traffic with the possibility of getting hit or run over. They can operate it from the safety of the cab, but one of the, I told him, we'll just, we'll get that out in front of the citizenry to let them know that, one of the things is, is that you have to keep your tote away from the mailboxes and posts and driveway posts and stuff, because when they go to reach for it, they can't, if it's sitting next to a tree or a post or a mailbox, they can't get a hold of it. So he said, just try to be, be, be aware of where you put the can, that it's not close to anything that the grapple can get a hold of. We're still receiving our discount, and the way I understand from him, I don't, I know this is not, I'm, I'm pretty sure this is not, some of the other cities are having to pay for the totes, but he said, I know, he said Cherokee Village, the first tote is included in your standard monthly fee. You only have to pay extra if you want more than one tote. So that's, I, I've heard some of the other cities, they've had to pay for their totes, but ours is.
Is it contracted at this coming year or next year?
It's the end of this year.
This year.
Yeah, the end of this year. So, that was one, I need, we need to start getting that, and we'll get it on, we'll get that out on the website and stuff where it can be, people can view it, view it at leisure, but. I think that's about all I can remember, because the rest of it will be covered in old business number three. Alrighty, we'll get down to the animal control. Do you wanna, who wants to start? Yeah, the animal control, be Ms. Megan, she's gonna, she got her numbers. You know, we asked her at the last council meeting to bring, they were talking about hiring a part-time, part-time helper while she is, um, going to be out later this year. So she's got her numbers that she said she'd bring to us.
I'm gonna stand up here so I can be heard by the thing, if y'all have any questions for me.
Yeah. Go ahead, what's, just kind of explain what the numbers are, what hours you're expecting to work and what the numbers are.
About 50 hours every bi-weekly pay period at 11:50 an hour. And then the budget line items are, let me see. 51,800 for animal, for animal control salary line, and 3,800 for animal control payroll taxes. I'm asking that be up to 60,000 for payroll taxes and 4,200 for, uh.
The salary line item is 60,000 and the salary, the payroll tax line item is 4,200.
Yes, sir.
So about $400 on the taxes and $8,200 on the, $8,200 on the salary.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And that'll get us through, that's, when was you believing you might hire somebody? If, if it's voted on, when would you hire somebody?
I was hoping to get them in by, August.
Yeah, August.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that'll cover from August to the end of the year, is what that'll cover.
And how are we, how are you advertising that position available?
I know it will have to be put in the newspaper for two weeks, but we'll properly post it on our Facebook and stuff like that as well.
If that's something that's favorable with the council, I mean, we can, I mean, you're looking at about $8,600 to get through the end of the year.
And this is just for August till the end of the year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And they, they do need some help out there, some more, I mean, they, they do a tremendous amount of work with the volunteers, but they need, you know, another, another, an employee that's, that's hired to be there.
Because I, I am getting to the point where I'm not able to go out and work in that heat like I should be able, you know what I mean? If we can both work in the heat, we can get our stuff done. And it is still getting done, but it's taking us longer and longer to get it done, because I, I cannot handle the heat, I can't handle the smell in some of the houses, I just, part of being pregnant.
It happens, it happens. But I mean, if this is favorable with the council, we'll get it, get everything worked out and get somebody.
Is this something that, Megan, that you and your department wants the council to consider come budget time of keeping?
Yes, ma'am.
If, if it works out, yes.
Do we have any prospects yet?
Um, I have a few applications, but I haven't really looked through them, looked through them, because I've been waiting to okay it through y'all.
Awesome.
Is that something that we need a motion to do, or do we?
Yeah.
I make the motion that we approve the increase into the line items.
I second it.
For animal control.
Motion by Ms. Roland, seconded by Mr. Ishmael to, to increase the line items to reflect the part-time employee.
I appreciate it very much, thank y'all. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Low.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Ms. Julia, where's there you are?
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be on part of the agenda.
Yeah, go ahead.
Pam, I can't see you there.
I'm always behind the pillar, I'm sorry.
I am Julie Milligan, I'm a proud volunteer of the Cherokee Village Animal Control. And my purpose here today to address you in the council is I just wanted to review some of the comments and discussion from last month's, um, meeting that you guys had, saw it on videotape. And as I was listening, absolutely every one of us volunteers and staff discussed the same things you discussed. It's just part of the, the business. But there were a couple of areas that I really did want to touch on a little bit, and I'll, and I'll go ahead and do that. The first is the cyclic nature of the number of animals in the animal control facility. That varies so much. So the reading on the report last month on May 15th, it stated that there were 38 dogs and 15 puppies, making a total of 53, and also six cats. That total number included the puppies, which Megan already said, gets, they get adopted fast. So out of those puppies that we had, a litter of 10, there are now three left. There were two stray puppies brought in, same age range, four months, and then another stray was brought in recently. So we have six puppies, from 15 down to six since that last report, which is great. Um, the total, down from 15. So the number 53 is misleading, I believe, if you just look at the one number. Because on May 26, I went out to each dog kennel individually, gave every dog a treat, and on May 26, 10 days later, there were 28 dogs on our facility, 28 adult dogs and 11 puppies. On June 9th, 23 dogs, adult dogs. On June 13th, 29 adult dogs. On June 21st, 30 adult dogs. It varies so much. There's probably more, more or less today than even when I put my notes together, because it's never a static number. Just want to make sure. But 36 is, sounds a lot more reasonable than 53. So when you read that one number, it is misleading, I believe. Um, on every walk-through through the kennels that I've done, there were empty kennel spaces in both of our new facility and our old white barn where we housed the big dogs. There were empty kennels at that time, I hope there still are. Um, when you were planning the facility, Mr. Thompson, you shared a lot of information from the Jonesboro Humane Society. So I called them last week and found out that their kennel size is three by eight for their medium or less smaller sized dogs, and then half of their kennels are four by eight for their bigger dogs. So at this time, our three by seven kennels, we find them suitable only for medium and smaller sized dogs. Our puppies do not share kennel space at all in the new facility, and that is because we have a strict protocol now that our puppies are separated. We have not had a parvo death in the last four litters. That is huge in an animal control facility. So they are separate in the available buildings that we have. And Megan already shared that, um, we can house 10 little tiny puppies together in one room. We can house two, three to four month old puppies together in a kennel. So it's not 10 puppies taking up 10 kennel spaces. But, um, we are very adamant that they stay separated from the adult dogs until they've had their puppy shots, and they are able, they don't even go outside at that time, they just stay separate from the adult dogs. Part of it is luck, they didn't come in with parvo, we recognize that, but part of it is the separation from the adult dogs because they carry it. The next area too I would like to address is man-hours and caring for puppies and dogs. The UC Santa Barbara study that you brought in for us, it stated that a minimum of 15 minutes per dog is needed on a daily basis. When I was volunteering with the six to eight week old puppies, that was accurate as can be. It took me two and a half hours to take care of 10 puppies, to clean them thoroughly, clean their cages thoroughly, to feed them, to water them, and to socialize them. Then as soon as dawn came, Dawn is another volunteer out there in the audience, as soon as she came, that time was cut in half. It was like an hour, sometimes we are both out there for an hour, sometimes I'm out there for an hour, she's out there for an hour. So that time does get cut in half. On an ideal day, currently, on an ideal day, and that simply means no rain, which, you know, how our spring was, on an ideal day, all of those puppies can be cared for because they're older now. They can be fed, watered, exercised as an entire group, their kennels can be scraped in one hour so that Megan and Brendan can come out and finish the sanitizing. So it's a, it's, you know, it's a help to the staff, too. If you apply that formula, that Santa Barbara formula, to our adult dogs, 15 minutes per dog, that's the minimum, 15 minutes per dog to keep kennels clean and be fed and exercised, um, it would take eight hours to do 32 dogs. But we have two staff members. So many times Brendan is out there doing five or six of those hours, Megan is doing less so she can do all the other job responsibilities. But we do find it is possible. And then we also get community service workers very frequently that come out and help with kennel cleaning and therefore reducing the time that they have to be out in the kennels. So with that formula, it's not ideal, but it is possible to adequately care for their needs even when we are not in an ideal number situation, when we're a little bit above capacity. The dogs are being very well cared for. Similar with the cats, I don't know if I have my cat people in here, but, um, on 5/15, the report that I listened to on the video said there were six cats. Two days later, there were 14. Currently, there's more than that. Kitten season, litters are coming in, pregnant cats, cats are coming in, and the same thing, our volunteers take care of the kittens. And when I say take care, I mean the basics. We don't do anything medical or anything like that, but we take care of the basic animal needs. And we have three cat volunteers that come in on a rotating basis and take care of all the kittens and cats. The kittens' adoptions have been pretty steady, they've been coming in and going out on a pretty steady pace, which is great. We have had this high number of dogs before, we have. Last February 24th, KAIT Deuce came in, did a short on-air segment on our overcapacity, because at that time, there were lots of dumpings of, of dogs and puppies. And the volunteers met, we met as a group to try to organize and go, what are we gonna do? We are so overcapacity, what are we gonna do? And we developed a three-pronged approach, once we realized after calling every shelter and rescue in a 200-mile radius of Cherokee Village to see if they could take our animals, no. They are all in the same bind, this is national, this is state. They were not able to take our dogs, they're in the same predicament. So the volunteers began taking dogs to adoption events within our community. We have an events coordinator Dee who finds all kinds of places for us to take our dogs to, and in one year, we took dogs out approximately 40 weekends out of the year. Our dogs were out in the community, and that was one of our number one ways to get adoptions. We were awarded the Best Friends Animal Society Shelter of the Year Award as a result of our increased adoptions. That came with significant financial and resource support. Two months ago, Best Friends donated 1,000, over $1,000 worth of puppy pads and kitty litter that were desperately needed at that time. They donated treats last week. Best Friends collaborated with Tractor Supply Company here in town, and they donated a whole truck bed full of dog food. So Best Friends has been a, a benefit for that. I presented at the Little Rock National State Arkansas Animal Control Conference this April. I was down there, I, I was selected to be able to talk. I will tell you, I talked 75 minutes, I'm only talking to you guys eight, I promise. But I did talk with them about our volunteer program and the efforts that we made, and I can tell you that no one in the state approaches 40 adopted, adoption events. Our volunteer group works very, very hard on getting dogs adopted. At this time, as the weather and volunteer availability permits, we continue to take our dogs out into the community. We'll be out, Tractor, Tractor Supply is huge, you know, we, we love them, they've been great for us. One of the other benefits that is so strong in taking the dogs out is developing community relationships. People now know us, they are positive in their support of us, we get donations, we get, we get adoptions, we wish we would get more, but, um, just getting the word out, there's still people that don't know there's an animal control in Cherokee Village. So that's, that's been one of the side benefits that I don't even think we knew were gonna, was gonna happen. Our Facebook page, Paw Control of Cherokee Village, if you haven't looked at it, and walk-in visitors are the other two most effective methods of getting adoption. Last point I want to touch on is that word euthanasia. It is in our mission statement that we do strive to be a no-kill shelter, and no-kill, the accepted definition of that is 90% of dog, animals that enter a facility alive will leave the facility alive. We've maintained that for three years now. So, um, however, we know, we know the reality, we are aware that there is the possibility of needing to put euthanasia in place, we hope we never have to, no one wants to see it, that's a given, we know that. We, nobody wants euthanasia. Megan went to the national conference and she came back and presented to all of the volunteers their information. They are a strong advocate of no-kill, however, they have a euthanasia protocol in place. So they gave Megan the information, she brought that back to us. It includes having a team that will assess behavior, medical conditions, and length of stay as it relates to a dog's behavior deteriorating from being in a, some dogs just don't do well in a, in a shelter situation. Her team is in place, it's Megan, a dog trainer for the behavior, a vet tech for the medical, and then they have a community member who, while he has adopted a dog from CVAC, he does not have any ongoing direct contact, he's not there ever on a regular basis. So he's got kind of that impartial view to help the team decide when a euthanasia might have to happen. In closing, seven minutes, I hope this information adds to the clearer picture of how the animals are cared for and the support Megan and Brendan do get and need from their volunteers. At the State Animal Conference, I was able to share our very strong community support. Our Facebook page, ours, this kind of makes sense, if you're reading our Facebook page, you like animals, but it's 99% positive. Even the other Cherokee Village sites that I read, they are probably approaching 90% of positive comments and ratings. I rarely see a negative comment, and if it is, it's that we don't answer our phones enough, because Megan and Brendan are busy all the time. I was able to also share how our city government was a support for CVAC. Found out that does not happen around the state, we know that, we, it doesn't happen around our community. You know, we have a few other towns that have nothing. So people were very impressed to see that we have the support of our city government also. We thank you for that very much, we hope it continues. I'm gonna wait till the animal control segment is over, but I have dragged my family and friends here from out of state, and after the animal control portion is over, we will probably get up and leave, if that's okay. Okay, just wanted, thank you for listening, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Julia. Thank you to all the volunteers, but, I mean, really, without the volunteer help out there, it would be just almost impossible job, I mean, it really would. Ms. Pam, update on the A&amp;P, everybody come to the 4th of July fireworks?
Yeah, um, as far as A&amp;P, I was not at today's meeting, they met today. I was held up at something else, so, um, I mean, update for 4th of July, we have three food trucks and... So I mean, update for Fourth of July, we have three food trucks and like lemonade shake-up kind of deal that's going to be there, so a little bit of new, I'm kind of excited about that. I just delivered the paddles and oars that are for the boat parade trophies, first, second, and third place, I just delivered those tonight, and so everything's still a-go. The Fireman's Pancake Breakfast tickets, I'd called Misty the other day and we were talking about where all can you get tickets? And all I know of right now is City Hall, so I don't know if there's anyone personally...
I know they'll be there, they'll be at B-4 Cell after Pancake Breakfast that morning. Yeah, Bay Heart, if you want to go down to Bay Heart Fire Station, you can get them anytime when the firefighters are there and here at City Hall.
And it's $10 for adult, five for kids, eight and under, correct?
Yes.
Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Okay. And as far as, I think that's about it, as far as, they just had the 70th anniversary, which went really well, and so, I mean, we're just constantly, you know, working on the next thing that's coming up, and Jason, you were there today, if you have anything to add of anything that happened today?
No, that was, that was literally, that was all that yet.
It won't be long, we'll be preparing for October, the Oktoberfest, going to try to bring that back again. Started last year with a little bit of a soft opening, hopefully this year it expands and gets bigger. Fourth of July, the fireworks, or the Pancake Breakfast starts at 6:30 in the morning and go from 6:30 to 11 at the Bay Heart Fire Station, and then come by the Thunderbird Dam up here at the top of the hill at dusk, will have the largest fireworks display in the near area, I know that.
And if anyone is interested in the boat parade, please call the Marina and get signed up for that, we're a little short right now on people registering, so we'd love to build that up. And like I said, I think there's a cash prize as well this year, again, for first, second, third, plus the oars, and the oars are absolutely beautiful as well, and who doesn't love money? So that's great. So if you want to sign up for that, and they meet at 6:30 and the parade starts at 7 for that, and they make their way around just before we do the fireworks, so...
It'll be a fun day, fun day of events, and Fourth of July is going to be on a Friday this year.
It is.
It'll be a fun day. Mr. Tony asked to give an update on the airport, what they're doing out at the airport, and I got quite a bit going out there, too.
Thank you guys for letting me come in, and can you hear me? Is that better? Hi, seems like I ran a lot of people off, I'm sorry. Tony Stausmus, I'm on the Airport Commission, I've been, it's almost been two years, I realize I've not ever addressed you guys, I know you all get the minutes, but the minutes don't get to show you everything that we've accomplished there at the airport, so I'll just kind of start off briefly with some things, the highlights. As you know, we lost our general manager right off the bat, back in the December of , let's see, 2024, 23, but we were able to hire John Manning as our general manager now, and he's been doing a great job. And Adam Bates took over as chairman of the committee because Mr. DiMaggio was also our chairman. And what, the big important thing of that happening was, we had this great five-year plan in effect, that we have things going on, taxiways, hangars being built, taxiways being lengthened, soon we'll probably be moving the terminal, things like that over in five years, and some updates with the fuel. Well, usually when you lose a general manager like that, you lose some steam, but we were able to keep the momentum going, keep everything on track, and we are still progressing the way that we want to progress. Another thing that happened, like we said, we have just completed the new hangars, we have three new hangars, box hangars, which if anybody understands that, they're just big old boxes. And all of our hangars right now are, as you saw in the minutes, have been rented out, we have two on a waiting list, so we still have a demand for, hopefully in the future, building some more hangars. With that, we also had a new access road put in there to those hangars on the side over there, if anybody's been over that way, so that was one of our other big accomplishments. Another big thing that happened was the eclipse, one of those kind of things, it doesn't get in the minutes and doesn't get a lot of publicity, but we had 46 planes come from all over the United States. We were probably one of the best places to see the eclipse, it was, of course, we were zero totality here, but being at the airport with it being wide open as it is, we got to experience a whole horizon of the sun, that little glow that was on there all the way around, and we had pilots just came in, my wife and I provided some hot dogs, chips, cokes, things like that. There was some merchandise sold, so some people bought some Cherokee Village zero totality merchandise, and all the, there was a few that stayed overnight, got to experience Cherokee Village and the surrounding area, they loved it, they had a great time, I think overall it was a great experience, it gave us a good name. There are pilots that were saying they'd like to come back and visit just from their short time that they came and visited during the eclipse. So that was one of our biggest things, we didn't try to make it hard on anybody, we charged a minimum amount for parking and things like that. I got to play my little air traffic control old self and do a little advising. We sold a lot of fuel that day, too, so you know, we did a really good, we had a really good time with it, and it did a lot of good for the airport itself. We are now about to lengthen another one of the taxiways, as we've seen in some of the things, we, one of the other two big things we did was we purchased two properties down on the highway if anybody's been out that way. The reason, probably not in the minutes, was because they had trees, and those trees prevented certain approaches for a certain type of aircraft coming in from the south. So what this did was we were able to purchase those properties, take the trees down, and now we're able to provide approaches for any aircraft that wants to come in that can, that our runway can handle. So that was very important for us, and in the meantime, we also were able to rent one of them out, it was a residential, so we are getting income from that, and hopefully soon we'll get somebody into the business, one we are working on, still trying to get a business in there, we'd like to get something in there to continue to make some income that way as well. And I know recently we changed, and one of our representatives, Jake Scott, has been working with me from Cherokee Village, and he's been doing a really good job, he's a pilot out there who, and it's one of the hangars, and he does a great job representing Cherokee Village as well. So just like, thank you for letting me represent you guys out there, it's probably one of the more rewarding jobs that I get to do in this town, as many of you know what I do, so thank you guys. Any questions?
I've always said, we was very blessed that Mr. Cooper founded in his favor to build a 5,200-foot runway up here because it's...
We had two secession business jets come in during the eclipse, bringing in like two families of eight, and it was kind of impressive to come, see them come in and be able to land and enjoy the eclipse here, so...
Yeah, and I know, and going along with Mr. Tony saying, the people that seen the larger planes land, and it's because they was able to cut the trees down to lower the angle of approach down so they can land and take off larger planes.
Yes.
So that helped out a lot. Thank you, Mr. Tony.
Thank you, guys.
In the old business, the fire station paperwork, we've received it, it's been distributed out to SID, like I said, I've been out of the office, Ms. Penny, have you received anything, have seen anything?
The update I received said the paperwork is still at the attorney's for review.
Okay.
Soon as we get that back, we need the mayor's signature and it can be filed.
Yep, it's a done deal. So it's still in the process, we're in the holding pattern. Old business number two, the raisin removal of 239 High Wata Drive, it has been raised and removed, it's been cleaned up, so it's got a thank you letter from the residents and surrounding houses, so it's took care of. All righty, the update's in the Municipal League Conference, the summer conference, this is actually my first time to attend the summer conference, myself, Ms. Heather, and Mr. Jason attended it, it was very informative, they've changed, some of the stuff they talked about is they've, they've changed some, well, that's the wrong word, they defined some of the FOIA laws where they actually went in the legislative, put some definition to some of them, so they'll be coming out and going into effect August 4th, so when they go into effect, we can kind of discuss what they are. We attended a class, I believe we all attended a class about the raisin removal of derelict properties in your area, so they're, I've talked to the Municipal League lawyer, Mr. Alexander, and they're going to be, the Municipal League actually has a punch list, so to speak, I know I'm using my country talk, but it's a, they actually have a list of everything to do and the steps, so, which we've been doing, we've been doing it, I mean, it's been getting done, but since the Municipal League has weighed in on it and said this is their vetted process of doing it, we're, I'm going to, well, we're going to implement that because, you know, they're the ones that's got the good lawyers and that'll stand up for us. So it was, it was a good show. One of the things, I talked to Ms. Penny and some others, if one of, if some of the other council members think about it and they want to go, and the next one will be in January, and we're able to go, it's very well worth it because it's a lot of information.
Well, the networking, the networking with the other towns in Arkansas, talking to their city leaders and hearing, hearing some of the same stories, the same woes, but also some of the same positives and celebrations, so just that networking and, you know, the who's who of Arkansas with the city leaders, I feel like is very important. It made some really good connections and hopefully be able to reach out on details on how they've done some things so that we can copy and paste procedures as much as possible so we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. You know, we all learn better from each other anyway, so that was my takeaway from it.
Moving into new business, we've got, the new business number one is the short-term special use permits, it's A, B, and C, we've got three of them. It's 2025-10 is the fall farmer's market and Oktoberfest, which is October, the Oktoberfest will be October 4th, 2025. The 2025-11 is Christmas in, Christmas in the Village, December 6th through December 8th, 2025, boy, it's hard to imagine we're over halfway to Christmas. And then 2025-12, which is the Fireman's Pancake Breakfast to be held at Bay Heart Fire Station on July the 4th, from 6:00 AM, 6:30 AM to 11:00 AM.
I'm making a motion, we accept all three?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ishmael, seconded by Mr. Thompson to accept all three special use permits, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion passes, thank you. And I was actually studying on these ordinances, we can, we don't have enough, you have to have a two-thirds majority to waive the three readings and also pass the emergency clause, and we only have five here, now we can, we can bring the ordinance up and we can vote on it, but we'll just have to do it the old fa, you know, do it at three different meetings, unless we have enough at the next meeting, and then we can, if there's six or more of us at the next meeting, we can waive the rules and pass it at that time, but we can go ahead and bring, bring the ordinances up.
Well, we just table it and knock it out in the meeting at the next meeting.
Totally, it'll be totally empty, guys.
Unless we take the chance, we don't have a quorum, and...
Surely we will.
Yeah.
How often does it happen, we won't have five here?
Yeah, varies, yeah. It'd be totally...
Get one vote done?
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt to get one vote done?
Yeah, we can, at the next meeting, if there's more than six, we can waive the rules and pass it in, or we can, we can go ahead and get one reading down.
Can we read them by title only?
We can, we can vote to read by title only.
I'm making a motion, we read by title only?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ishmael, seconded by Mr. Thompson to read the ordinances by title only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like signs, motion passes. All righty, ordinance number one, you want to read that, Ms. Penny, you probably, they might can understand you better than me. I get my Arkansas swing in there, but they might not understand me.
Ordinance 2025-01, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2015-06, prescribing and establishing a permit and code to do business within the city of Cherokee Village, Arkansas, to levy an animal control, annual occupational fee for the carrying on of certain businesses, trades, occupations, industries, vocations, and professions within the city of Cherokee Village, Arkansas. Establishing the time when such fees shall be paid, collection thereof, establishing penalties for the violation of Cherokee Village annual occupational permit ordinance and enforcement thereof, providing supervision and regular, regulation of the welfare and future development of the business community of the city of Cherokee Village, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Now, for clarification, all three of these ordinances, I just thought about this, just for clarification, these three ordinances that we're passing tonight are repealing ordinances, two of them are more, two of the ordinances are 10 years old, one of them's was in 2021, so four years old, but we're cleaning up the, what we did was, the Planning and Zoning Commission sat down and took five ordinances that we had, combined them into three, kind of made, brought them up to date with current wording and wording and phrasing, and also a couple of the ordinances we had didn't really have a clear set enforcement side, so that was one of the things we were running into with the, trying to get an enforcement side through the court process, so this is, this is what we're doing, to clean everything up, bring everything, bring the ordinances up to date and make them enforceable. So just, just going to clarify them three. All righty, let me see, since we're doing this a little bit different, all righty, roll call, vote, or...
I'm making a motion, we approve ordinance 2025-01. I'm making a motion, we approve ordinance 2025-01.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ishmael, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve ordinance number 2025-01, roll call, vote, please.
Low?
Yes.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The second one is ordinance number 2025-02.
Ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance repealing ordinance 2021-02, an ordinance 2021-02A, and establishing an ordinance to regulate unregistered wrecked or junked vehicles within the city limits of the city of Cherokee Village, Arkansas, providing for a penalty for the violation of the ordinance and for other purposes.
Need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-02.
A 02A.
A 02A.
Second.
Need, motion by Mr. Low, seconded by Mr. Ishmael to pass ordinance 2025-02, roll call, vote, please. We was exempting 2A.
It was my fault.
That's all right.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All righty. And the third one is ordinance number 2025-03.
Ordinance 2025-03, an ordinance repealing city of Cherokee Village, Arkansas, ordinance 2015-01, and adopting rules and regulations concerning garbage and trash disposal and regulating abandoned, inoperable property, abandoned junk motor vehicles, household, inoperable household appliances, and litter for the purpose and for other purposes.
I'm making a motion, we accept ordinance 2025-03.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ishmael, seconded by Ms. Harrison to pass ordinance 2025-03, roll call, vote, please.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Low? Low.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Alrighty, thank you all. New business number five, I actually, we, we talked about Monday night. I had contacted FNBC Bank because it's, it was time to negotiate our interest rates. So when I contacted them, Ms., oh, Julia, Julia Sieg, Julia Davison?
Julie Davis.
Julie Davis, okay. Julie, nor Julie Sieg forever, sorry. Julie Davis, she is, she's our new contact through FNBC. She had expressed, instead of us renewing our interest rate and guaranteeing it for a year, 12 months, she's, she said that they would do it for 24 months. But what they would do is, it would be the, let's see if I get the wording right. At the, on the first working day of the month, they would take the interest rate of the Wall Street Journal Fed Fund's executive rate, effective rate, minus one and a quarter percent, 1.25%, which would bring it to what our banking, our checking accounts, our general checking, or all of our accounts would draw as an interest rate. And also, they would guarantee anything from three to 12, from three months up to 12 months at a 4.0 on CDs, certificate deposit rates. So, and she said, you know, and I understand it's, it's a fair rate. At the day when we was talking, it was, would have been 3.18 is what they would have been paying us when we talked at the first of the month, which is more than what we was making. You know, her explanation is, is that, you know, they guarantee it for 12 months. What happens is the feds cut the interest rate at the end of the year, the bank's gonna lose money, you know. But if they raise it, you know, we're gonna lose money. So if we do the, the adjustable rate, you know, everybody stays, everybody stays on a level board, which, I mean, I agree with, I understand. So that's, that's what, where our FNBC accounts are gonna be drawing. Guess I need a motion to, I need a motion to accept it. That's what I need, you know.
I make, I make a motion that we accept the, the interest rate.
Proposal.
Proposal for the interest rate for FNBC Bank.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Low, seconded by Mrs. Harrison to accept the FNBC Community Banker interest rate proposal. Roll call, vote please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Low.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, on to the, Mr. Police Chief or Mr. Lieutenant, whichever one's gonna get in the hot box. The new business number six is the police, the police vehicles. We've been, and, and I, I'll tell you that we've been pretty well frugally shopping, trying to find the best, the best rates and the best price. And you know how vehicles are, they don't have very many. And the ones, the ones, about the time you find the one you want, they get bought and they don't have any more. We're getting kind of late in the year, so it's... And, and this is to go in, this is to keep in our program like we've been, we start, I got one. They had started several years ago now to try to, you know, to have a fleet that's, you know, less than 150,000 miles on them that are serviceable and operable. You guys stand up at the mic. Stand up at the mic. Stand up at the mic. I don't stand at the mic. Everybody else goes at the mic. That way you can look them in the face.
These are notes that Lieutenant helped me work on. We worked on getting these notes together today. But we spoke about this some at the end of last year.
Mm-hmm.
We ended up not purchasing new vehicles last year because we got such a good deal the year before that at the end of the year. We purchased two more that same year. So we didn't actually purchase any police vehicles last year. And we spoke about, we're, we're almost to our point that we're trying to get to, where every year we can rotate out two vehicles that are still in good shape, have low mileage to get trade in, and, uh, I, I'm asking for two more vehicles this year for the consideration of the purchase of it. So.
You know, and I...
It's kind of time crunching.
Yeah.
Right now because we have found two 2025 Tahos is what we're looking at to purchase this time. Preferred, we're, we're, we should know tomorrow, on 2020 Fords, which is gonna be a little bit cheaper on us, about $3,000 cheaper is, the, the 2020 Fords would work just fine. So.
And they're still brand new vehicles.
And they're still brand new vehicles.
Full warranty, brand new vehicles, yes.
Yes.
I didn't have a chance to ask you, is that the, is that the vehicle price or the equipped price for the 2025?
That is the vehicle price. I've got some of the equipment broke down.
Okay.
Lowered down, but I, I figured we needed to discuss the vehicles first and then we
Yeah.
Go from there.
And we, you know, in the past, we've been buying the Ford, Ford responder trucks, the four, the four by fours, which, which, I think what you find, we, we had found three, but before we even called them back the next day, they was gone.
They were gone.
They're not really, they're, they're, they're not making them so much with the four by four. You think they're, they're two-wheel drive.
Yes, they are. We, we found three trucks and they were gone before we could get to them. We actually had two Tahos that were on reserve. Pickup date was the 6th of this month to get them. And Lieutenant called them like five days after and they'd already got rid of them on us. So I was a little bit upset about that.
So that's a, and like I said, the Tahos, we went with them because they're still sticking with something that's a true four-wheel drive truck type vehicle that's got a high resale value. I mean...
The Tahos actually have a higher resale value than the pickups do, so.
And, and the buy, like I said, we got, they're gonna liquidate at least two of the high mileage rigs, the ones that sit out there. We're gonna try to, you know, move, move everything down and get, start trying to get rid of the, I mean...
The last page on there is a inventory of all the police vehicles and the mileage that's on them. And we've got about four of them that are getting pretty high on mileage. So, not pretty high, they, they're extremely high on mileage, so.
What are the, what are the ones you got stars by? Does that mean anything?
That's, that's the, the...
Are you talking about on the inventory page?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the chief and lieutenant rig.
Those are ones that will be moving into the fleet.
Yeah.
The Tahos will, will replace those two and those two vehicles will be going into the fleet.
Yeah, and then we'll get rid of two of the...
So have you identified which two you want to get rid of?
Uh, we're, no, actually we haven't yet. We're gonna inspect them, the Lieutenant and I, we talked about that today, but we was kind of busy working on this today, so we didn't get a chance to drive them. And I think we've got some that are higher on mileage, but that are actually in better shape than some of the lower mileage ones. We're just gonna analyze it, so.
So your goal is to have 10 and then rotate two, two coming in, two going out?
Yes.
And you, and just, year before last, you got to the 10, correct?
Yes. Uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of two, but I want to keep two of the higher mileage ones. But those will be for part-time usage and reserve officer usage. They won't be driven as much. In other words.
So that keeps 10 in service or 12 in service?
Uh, 12.
Yeah, that'll, yeah. Yeah, because we'll get two in and move two out, so it's table to 12. Yeah, and it's, like I said, you know, it seems like vehicles are, they only made a certain amount of them. They, when they, you know, GM, well, GM and Ford both, when I talked to them, they're like, well, they only had a certain allotment that they made this year. And, you know, they're already spoken for. If you don't get your name on the list, you're not gonna get one. So we even put our name on the list and still didn't give them.
Right. So Chief Monty, can you just, just because we're getting hit with this information now, can, can we just go back to like, I mean, I don't know if we're having to approve or not approve of this tonight, but just, I mean, my take on it is just knowing what, what's been budgeted or not budgeted. And that kind of puts me at my baseline, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do you have any of the, I mean, I can try to pull up our stuff.
If you remember, if you remember, we didn't budget for new vehicle purposes because we said we would just take it, we would take, take it as it come in, when they come in, we would take care of that when it come in.
We, we spoke about that in the budget meeting, if you remember right.
I got a lot of information in my head.
Yeah, and what the original plan, what, what, what the original plan was when we were talking in the budget meeting, we was gonna try to get rid of one of the, one of the pickup trucks because they'll bring the most money as resale value. And we would actually, hopefully with the resale value on the one truck, you would, you would only be in, you know, instead, you'd be almost like purchasing one instead of two. But after we got to talking, I said, well, we keeping these higher mileage rigs around. I mean, we need to start phasing them. I mean, they got 150,000 miles on them. They, 150,000 Cherokee Village miles on them. And that, we need to kind of start phasing some of the higher mileage rigs out and, uh, that's what we was talking about, getting rid of the, you know, phasing out some of the, all they got on, the pursuit SUV or in the Charger or whichever one. I know whichever two they pick, but it'll be either two SUVs or the SUV, one of the SUVs and the Charger. But one of, one of other of the combinations is gonna go because they're both, you know, they're 150,000 miles plus.
And that, I, I just, you know, and I know that's what we said. It's just, it's, it's tough getting hit with this tonight as opposed to our working meeting, just to digest it. It just makes me nervous. I feel like I'm on, you know, I'm on the budget committee, so I, I take responsibility of the money we're spending and where it's coming from. So.
And I apologize for that, but that's kind of what happened to us.
I get it.
With the, the way the vehicles are moving, the two that they have on the lot now, the two 2025 Tahos, they've told us, if somebody calls, they're gone. So that, that's the purpose. I apologize for, for short notice.
And then like I said... Yeah, we didn't get grants.
Right.
Now, we, we are hoping to get grants to cover the, some of the cost of the equipment. That's what we're hoping. They get, they'll, they'll cover some of the cost of the equipment, just not the vehicle purchase.
Not, not, I know we're not gonna hold you to this, but if you had to guess, what is the amount to sell the ones that we're gonna sell, we would get to offset the cost of the, the new ones? Do you know, do you have any idea?
I, I don't. In the past, they went for around 35.
Hundred dollars, yeah.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, yes, sir.
And that's, that's kind of what we're...
They're, they're police vehicles, so.
And that's what, I mean, kind of the program we're trying to get out of is, is they, in the past, they, they bought vehicles and they drove them until they was, you know, salvaged. You can't, you can't, when you keep them that long, you can't depreciate anything out anymore. You, you've drove them until they're, you know, salvage value. So that's what we was trying to, the program that they instituted.
Right.
But two is before I come along, but they...
Right.
Started trying to get into is like, we'll try to, you know, if we can try to get rid of the vehicles before they get, you know, when they get 100,000, you know, not too many miles on them, we can actually get money out of them because the, then they're useful to, we could actually sell them to a small, maybe a small another department equipped.
Right, that's what I was, that was gonna be my next question.
And get more money out of them. That's the, that's the, the goal, plan, you know, probably not, you know, not this year, but next year.
It's took us a little time to get to this point, but that's the goal, to, to keep them rotating out two at a time. And that way we can keep just about everything in warranty, so our maintenance will go down.
No, that, that makes sense.
Well, I'm all for you finding them 2024s because that'll save us 6,744 dollars.
I, I've got it wrote preferred on the notes there.
I mean, charm, charm them with that conversation.
Yes.
So is this in the police budget or are we looking at having to take this out of reserves?
It, it would come out, it would come out of the reserves.
Like you said, we, we've looked in, to a grant and that didn't come through for anyone this year.
Yeah, the, yeah, the federal government didn't give any, give any monies to the grant programs for vehicle purchases this year.
Could we do a quick math on, you know, I know it's to be determined on what the value you sell it as, but if we, if worst case scenario, we bought a 2025, we sell it a low price, and then you add your equipment, like what would that vehicle cost us times two?
Uh, let's see here. I've got it here in my notes somewhere.
Yeah, it's total. You're looking.
Uh... Well, that, that's into the... That's back into the equipment part of it. I have it here two ways. Depending on whether we get, there's a grill guard or there's a bumper. The bumper is much heavier duty, but it's $2,000 difference in the bumper.
Yeah.
It is attached to the frame and you could just about bulldoze with it. But, but the, the grill guard, we, we've hit deer in those things before and it still got into the vehicle.
Yeah. I think what was, when we did the two pickup trucks or the four pickup trucks in '23, wasn't they total, total all in equipment, everything around 115, one?
That seems right.
And, and if it's the 2025s and you go, you go full out, you're about 124. I mean, that's...
And, and the, the ask is that we, we pay, that the city pay cash for these vehicles? Or we, or we finance?
Now...
Well, actually, we've discussed that. Both ways, I've discussed that with the mayor.
Yeah, and that's a possibility. That would be totally up to the city because I've actually, I mean, if, up to, in the past, we have, you know, when we had the ARPA funds that we was relying on, we was able to pay cash for them. But now, one thing I did, I will say is that there, there is a possibility that we could pay a portion of them, you know, pay a portion. And then the, I've talked to, what is his name? Yeah, it's, it's the, I think his name's Billy Holland Day, but he's the, yeah, I think it's Billy Holland Day, but it's the USDA guy out of Batesville. Oh. Oh, he retired, okay. Yeah, and they can, and they can do a low interest loan.
Yeah, I was gonna, for my own edification, because like what type of interest rate? Like a variance?
Yeah, it's the, yeah, I guess, yeah. Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's always a possibility. We can pay, if we wanted to pay, you know, whatever you decide, if you wanted to pay the $50,000 and finance the rest. I mean, it's, there, there is a low interest. USDA will do the, what'd you say, four and a quarter, 4.25? And they'll, they'll finance it for, when I was talking to Mr. Billy, it'll... Yeah, they'll, they'll finance it. You know, they'll go out three to five years. You can finance the balance out and just make a yearly payment. I mean, these, and these types of vehicles with a single driver, I mean, you know, five years is not unheard of. I mean, a service life, I mean, you, you know, minimum of five-year service life.
Well, my opinion, my opinion and I can, you know, certainly, certainly hear other arguments for or against, but, you know, being that, you know, cash is king, but cash is also critical, you know, I, that would take a, almost a fourth out of the reserve fund if we just wrote that check. So I'm more on the mindset of, but at least finance one, maybe buy the other, or finance them both. And if, if we can find money and move things around at a later date, make a motion to pay them off. But I'm a little, I'm a little nervous about just writing that big of a check.
Yeah.
Out of, out of the reserve account, personally.
I mean, and the reason we, I mean, kind of threw it on, I mean, we was gonna try to wait till next month, but just like, everybody we've talked to, all the...
I'm glad we're talking about it.
I mean, all the suppliers we've talked to from Aniki, Iowa to Fayetteville to Mississippi. I mean, we've talked to a bunch of suppliers and they're like going, well, they're, you know, they're pretty well done. You're not gonna, you know, we don't really have any left on the lot and you might find a few straggling here and there. So, but we'll say a 2026 model that'll come in probably in, you know, you know, March or, March or May of 2026.
Right.
And like I said, we thought we had two reserved and then all of a sudden we didn't.
Well, no, and because of that, like I, I feel like a decision needs to be made.
Mm-hmm.
I would just like to explore those options, being that, you know, at the industry, I hate the idea of paying interest, but I also know that it could also buy us some time because the need is clearly there. I, I'm just a little, little hesitant about that big check being written.
And that's...
So what... So, what, what will be different next year, anything about this formula be different next year, you'll?
Be more expensive.
Well, but, do you feel like the two cars you would sell next year, you would get more for instead of only?
They're, they're already depreciated to junk, so that's what you're gonna get, you're gonna get junk price.
As we move forward in this project, the vehicles are gonna have a lot lower models, so they're gonna be worth more on a trade-in or a strike-out sale, that's the, that's the, the whole seller point of our project, is to try to keep the mileage as low and the use of service as low as we can, so we do have more equity in the vehicles that we will be liquidating to offset the price of the vehicles, so that's the, that's the point of the project.
Right.
To your point, though, Heather, you're gonna have two years where we're expending approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to rotate out these four vehicles.
That's the, that's the hard part of the, of the project, because you do have to fund it upfront, once it gets in place, and of course, rotating, then the cost goes down.
Yeah, I, I get the play.
But you're two years down the road before you see the benefit of that rotation out, so you, so, no, that, I mean, that's the real numbers, because you're gonna have to rotate these two this year, you're gonna rotate two more next year, so cumulatively, you're looking at over three hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty this year, a hundred and fifty next year.
Monty, or Chief, I've got a question.
Okay.
So if we're wanting to do ten, like, keep ten vehicles, why are we keeping twelve?
Uh, for reserve, I've got a really good part-time program, reserves is, I've got two, so, but, I have a lot of reserve, a lot of part-times that do fill and work, and that way there's vehicles there, and I, you're gonna, I mean, it's gonna happen, somebody's gonna hit a deer, there's a vehicle gonna be tore up, and it's something extra to drive when that happens.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Secondary car that is a part-time, when they're utilizing one of the full-time vehicles, right, this year, well, we've got twelve thousand extra miles on our full-time vehicles that wouldn't be there if they were utilizing a part-time, so that's why we're trying to keep a part-time vehicle separate from the others, because that also keeps our bodies safe.
So, question to follow up on Ms. Rishmal's, push come to shove, budgets get cut severely, so what's the minimum vehicles you need, because people work shifts?
Mm-hmm.
So if people were to sit here and exchange vehicles, in other words, officer comes to come on his shift, and he drives his personal vehicle to City Hall, he picks up the police vehicle that just came off shift, or he picks up a spare, what do you pare your fleet down, because you're talking about maintaining a fleet of twelve?
We've done that in the past, and the fleet depletes very quickly, when you, you take a vehicle.
No, I, I get that, I'm, I'm just saying, theoretically, if we get into a budget crunch, and you have to pare this down, which means that this idea of rotating out two every year, if we're really squeezing numbers, you know, you're talking about maintaining a fleet of twelve, can you go down to six, or can you go down to eight, if we get in a crunch, because one of the things that Ms. Rowland is working on with her committee, is we've got to find a way to raise additional revenues, just to maintain what we have.
I mean, we could probably go down to eight, but once again, you're creating hot cars then, and they're, they go downhill very fast.
Understood, but this is a more ideal setup, without a doubt, but at some point, if we don't make some of the changes that we are discussing in Ms. Rowland's committee, then that's something that, you know, we would, we've been working towards this for a lot of years, this goes back to the previous administration, you know, decisions made, and then we've continued the last two years, uh, with this, you know, working towards this goal, but if we don't see some of the positive changes that we need to see, uh, on the revenue side, then, you know, we're gonna get back into a situation of aging high, high mileage vehicles, which is not, you know, we made that decision really about nine, ten years ago, to try to work to where, close to where we are now, and we're, we're close to that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Rowland, how would, um, with, with the numbers, how would a financed vehicle with those monthly payments factored in, how would that affect some of the things you're building, I mean, obviously with interest, I know that it's costing us money to use other people's money, but is, is the juice worth the squeeze, as they say, to do that, or is it still?
I can just tell you what we're working on on our side, and, and the simple fact of the matter is that, you know, the city is, is in a deficit, and has been, and will continue to be, and you can only utilize your reserves so much to make up that deficit before you're done, and, um, you know, we've got a street department that is short, and I think Cal still has a shortage in the fire department, so, um, you know, right now, we're maintaining at a loss, and we're trying to find a way to get back to where those departments are, um, back to where they were pre-lawsuit, and, and that sort of thing, so, um, I know one of the biggest things we're working on, and it's, I hate to bring it up right now, because I, I kind of feel like it's on the spot, and it's not really under what we're talking about, but, um, we need a, um, street database, and I had asked for this back when John was our street department supervisor, and I don't know, it was a lot of bouncing back and forth to, no, it's street department, uh, committee, no, it's, you know, the street department, and we went through kind of that song and dance, and it never got done, so in order for us to move forward, we need that database to show the streets in Cherokee, our priority list, when we're the last ones that had work, and I'll tell you while I'm going down this path in just a second, um, which ones, um, need work, when was the last time they had work, we've got to start maintaining that, and being able to present that to citizens, because if we're going to look for a bigger revenue stream, and we all know what that means, and that means sales tax, you're gonna have to promise the citizens a pretty big package, on top of that, you're gonna have to promise, or give them something tangible that holds this city council and future city councils' feet to the fire, that those promises are kept, that they're, they're fulfilled and they're kept, and, um, so, the, where I'm going and how this deals into this, is that right now, um, we're trying to find a way to where we're not in a position, come budget, to where we're, we're cutting jobs, and, you know, continuously dipping into your reserve is, it, just in my opinion, it's dangerous, now, I was here when we first started, I was here back when this whole idea of coming up with the fleet and start maintaining it, you know, came about, and when it was just an idea, and it took a few years to even get it in the process to get it going, because back then, we had a lot of council members that were just no to our str, to our police department, no matter what, and it's just the truth, so, um, I get the importance of this, and it looked where, where we were, and look at where we're now, with our vehicles, with our police vehicles, and, but you're caught between a rock and a hard place, because this is important, but at the same time, are we willing to spend reserve money yet again, when the city is in a deficit, and we've got departments that are underfunded, um, you know, one of the biggest things to citizens is streets, because our streets are in, you know, bad shape, and, um, so I don't know, can, can you reconcile that with citizens about police cars versus streets, and I'm not saying one has.
Honestly, I think if you talk about cutting public services, they'll, they'll run us out of town on a rail, you talk about cutting police, fire, streets, they'll, they'll tar and feather you and run you out on a rail.
Agreed.
You can't, that's, that's the three main things that this city has to provide, police, fire, and streets, anything, anything other than that's extra.
Agreed, so I think it's, um, I think if you were gonna try to balance this, as much as I hate to suggest this, um, I, if we're gonna do anything, I would look at one vehicle this year, and hope and pray that next year, there's some grants, I mean, but I'm just one person, so I would love to discuss it further, where everybody's heads are at.
And, and two, with your, um, talk about the Economic Exploration Committee, you know, we're not gonna get our big answers on money coming in till well past twenty twenty-six, so we don't even know what we may or may not get in two years' time, which might even turn into a three-year time, so.
Well, bear in mind, the, the, what we're looking at with the Economic Exploration Committee is, when you talk about sales tax, it's going two places and two places only, and that is to our fire department, to our street department, it will not go in the general fund, and that's gonna be the proposal we, we put forward, and I feel like that's the only proposal that the citizens would back, and I do not disagree with them at all, so that, that's the two places we're looking at, better streets and ensure our fire department, so, and if you take that load off of the city in the general fund, of course, you're freeing up for your PD, so, and the numbers that we're looking at right now, and, and just so everybody knows, because, you know, I know this is gonna, this is gonna go out and people are gonna watch this meeting, we are planning on educational tools, we are planning on town halls, we are planning on getting citizen involvement, we want citizen input, and it's complete transparency, so I don't want anyone to think, oh goodness, they're talking about a sales tax increase, you know, and it's gonna be, we're, we're still quite a ways out from this, and we would not go forward on this without citizen involvement, and being one hundred and ten percent transparent to the citizens on what we're talking about, so.
Uh, Chief Monty, on getting the trucks, like you said, there's been deadlines, June sixth, it came and went, they got rid, you know, so what's the, what's the background on, is like, this the only month this is happening, like, can you buy vehicles at other times and get some of these deals, like, what's, is it just this month that this happens in, or, I mean, is this like, one particular place that you go to shop it?
No, no, we've checked several different places, and, that's really unknown at this point, it just depends on how fast, what, what inventory they have, it just depends on how fast it's getting bought up.
So you're either having to call them all the time to see what they have, or they happen to be calling you and say, this is what we got, I mean?
No, we, we've been checking, we've been checking with them.
Yeah, you have to call them, because other places show up with money and buy them, so.
Yeah, they don't have to call you, they've got plenty of people calling them.
They, they don't really care if we, if we call and say, do you have a truck in shop, because, or if you have a truck to sell, because they probably got ten people in line to buy it, and like he, like he said, the ones we've been talking to said, the twenty-fives are done, you're not gonna get them, said you might get a twenty-sixth in the middle of next year, but we already tried that with the twenty-fives, and they sold them out from under us, because somebody was standing there with the money, and we was waiting.
Right, where, where is this place?
Uh, ESU.
It's in Joplin.
Best side of Indiana.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's Indiana.
ESU Pursuits, is the name of it.
Question, getting them out of Indiana versus Fayetteville, does, how much of that eats up that three thousand dollar savings, anything, getting them down here, or?
Not really, I mean, there's gonna be transport, you have to pick them up, so.
There'll be, there'll be two of us drive, three of us drive down one vehicle and two of them drive them back, so.
That's something else to kind of look at, too, you're talking about two officers being gone out of area, out of state, and you're talking about pay, and, you know, um, I'm assuming stay the night and come back next day, or?
Uh, I'll drive, drive.
But I mean, that, that's something else to, to think about, you know?
And when, when we've picked them up in the past, we don't, you, me and Anthony and the mayor have went and got them, and we didn't charge nothing to go get them, we just went and got them.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's, that's been a part of the past, avoiding that delivery fee, because you're, otherwise, you're paying the dealership to bring them here.
Yep. So I do have one more question, and this has, this isn't the money side, did you, are you guys looking, I know you said you can't find any four by four trucks right now, but, and you'll have to refresh my memory, because it's been here a long time, cannot remember if it was you or previous chief that said they did not want to go back to SUVs, we wanted to stick with trucks, was that previous chief, or was there another?
That, that was previous chief.
That's what I couldn't remember.
And we're not looking to switch to all SUVs, it, it's just handy to have a couple of them in the fleet.
Gotcha, that was, yes, that, that clears that up for me.
Well, and the SUV that we were switching from was the Ford Explorer, which is a smaller, it's a mid-size SUV, so there was issues about the size of the interior and the ability to carry equipment and everything else, and that was part of the reason of going, you know, to the trucks, but also having, I think, these are gonna be more on the supervisory and investigative side, you're still gonna have for the patrolman, the trucks.
Right.
And after having the Ford SUVs, you, you learn the problems.
Yeah.
We're not interested in Durango's due to transmissions, and the Ford SUVs, it's, the front ends in those do have a lot of problems.
So my biggest concern is, if this happens this year, and the same thing happens next year, possibly, if we're doing the math right, which we didn't even include insurance or anything that might change or go up, but a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year, I know I'm stressed out about the money with the revenue not coming in, so I'm, I'm not only just looking at, you know, right now, but I'm just thinking, two, I mean, a year from now, a whole nother, and if we only have, you know, five hundred thousand in reserve, I mean, we can do the math, right, so that's just, that's just where I'm at, like I told you, I'm, I'm with you, I'm digesting.
Mm-hmm.
Best I can.
Well, and I, I can't speak for the previous mayors, but I know the two years that I've been in office, because of our very diligent department heads, we've come in very under budget, I mean, we come in under budget a hundred and sixty thousand dollars this last year, so, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, you can put budget, that's why budgets are pencil, you put budgets down, and you say you're gonna spend this much money, but that don't mean you necessarily spend that, so because of our do, you know, department heads being very frugal, I mean, we have very frugal department heads, they don't ask for a whole lot.
I, I agree, but a big chunk of that is because Joey never.
We actually come in a hundred and sixty thousand dollars under budget, so.
Correct, but a big portion of that is because Joey didn't hire anybody, which is, you know, we need him to hire somebody, so I, I get what, I mean, I, I agree that we came in under.
I just like for some of the people we hired to actually stay working.
I know, I know.
We've, we've been trying to get to, to that point with this program, and, uh, if we have to take off a year, it'll be a setback, but if that's what's got to be done, we, we're just getting so much closer to it.
I know.
If we have a hundred and fifty thousand this year, a hundred and fifty thousand next year, that's not necessarily, one, it could be grant funding available next year, that could offset that hundred and fifty thousand by large portion, uh, also, depending on the vehicles that we look at purchasing, that may be less than price next year, what, what we decide to get if we go into the structure that are available at that time to request two of the trucks.
Yeah, hopefully.
That could be at a lower cost, and we'll look at the beast deal also, so.
When did, when, uh, for the equipment grants, like, what month of the year would that even maybe come to fruition?
I don't have a date right, I haven't yet on my record.
Rider?
Rider, he has got the information on that, I didn't actually get that, but we can think about that.
Do you think twenty twenty-five, or you're talking about?
Yeah, I think it'd be this year, if they're funding, if they do be funding through that grant for a portion of the, it would be this year.
He, he's actually been contacting us, saying, you know.
He's just waiting for us to say what we need and how many, and such and that, so that's kind of where we're at.
Well, and a portion of this fleet replenishment, or replacement, a portion of this funding came from federal and state money that came in, you know, that was ARP money, and, you know, as a result, subsequent to COVID, so we had some supplemental funding that wasn't necessarily tax-related.
No, yeah, the four, the four vehicles that was bought when I first, we bought four in twenty twenty-three and didn't buy any last year.
Right.
Uh, but the four in twenty twenty-three, yes, was, uh, it was, uh, if I remember right, one was from reserves, and three come from ARPA and cares.
Right.
Is what it was.
So we, it hasn't been totally deficit funded, it, it has been, in part, because we had latitude from supplemental state and federal funds, and we really, you know, need to constantly, and I know that Anthony and, you know, they're looking at grants all the time, and. And, you know, we're staying in touch with Representative Steimel and Senator Payton, you know, to be aware of, be, stay in touch with the fact that whatever state and federal funds may be available now and anything, you know, rolling down in the future.
So just for my clarification, though, there are no grants to cover the cost of these for this year? And the equipment that could get covered would fall for next year, correct?
So the grant we're looking at for the, this, it will be this year. It's the Gary Sinise Foundation has a grant that's available that can go for equipment.
Okay, for equipment, okay.
For these vehicles.
Yeah, he's, yeah, like the chief was saying, the grant guy, I mean, he's on go and got the paperwork, we just was, couldn't, we couldn't find the truck, we didn't know if it was trucks or Tahos or what we was gonna get, so we can't order, you know, he can't order the equipment until we know what and yes and what we're getting, so. That's-
All I can do is, is give my personal opinion, I don't wanna see the program die, but I also am very nervous about buying two. My suggestion would to be buy one.
Mayor? I feel, I feel the same way, except in my opinion, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse on this, I would, I would rather us see exploring finance options before we just wrote the check, even for one, that's just my opinion.
I will add this, and Monty, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do remember way back when there was a lot of different financing for things that the city needed, and this is way back when. And it can be a problem. If, my opinion, just on what's been in the past versus what we look at now, I think you're better off in the long run, buy a lot to decide how many you're gonna do and then, and then pay cash. But that's just my opinion. But I will say, if your, if city council is gonna go for two, I would look at financing. But if we're just gonna go for one, I think it should just be paid and done.
Does one, is one helpful or not helpful?
It'll be helpful, yes.
And I meant more in terms of the program that we have right now.
It will, yes, it will.
And is there a chance, like, three months from now, you can make another phone call and there might be, I mean, in the event things changed with, you know?
Sure.
I'm just saying.
Sure, we've got our contacts, we can, we can call them and try again, see if there's anything.
Did, have you called earlier part of the year? I mean, when do you start calling?
Well, like I said, we thought we had these two.
On the June 6th deadline, that was, we had actually a place, I believe, consoling contacted us, and they were ordering the vehicles at that time, they were putting in the bill specs for them to GM.
Yeah.
So at that time, they asked us how many we wanted, so we told them, you know, we're looking at a grant. So if we say we want two, is that gonna buy us to buy them, or what is the situation on that? They said, no, absolutely not, we need to know how many, we need to order. If by some reason you're not able to fund this, we can sell them to somebody else, it's not a big problem. So at that time, we told them to get two for us. The delivery date from GM to them was supposed to be June 6th. I called them June 12th to check on, they were already getting on, so. So obviously, they came in prior to June 6th and made a lot of contacts and stuff.
Right.
So that's kind of how that situation.
Gotcha.
That was a whole June 6th situation.
Well, and I know it's also a lot of man hours, a lot of research, a lot of time on both of your parts to continue to field these phone calls and do this research, and, you know, try to be incredible stewards of the money, but of the city. So first of all, I wanna thank you for that. And this is just one of those tough situations that what we need is very apparent, and that's not what anyone's arguing. It's just being a good steward of our little, our little pile of money, and make sure that we are spreading it and holding on to it to make sure that we're not in some type of emergency situation later down the road, so.
Chief question, do you have any, how's your budget looking like right now? Or do you think you're gonna have any significant extra as we get towards this year?
I'm running pretty level right now, so.
I mean, it's, it's hard, it's hard, and it makes, you know, it's part of the reason setting up here is hard. Because the city needs things, and it, the city fell behind years and years ago so badly. And it takes so long to crawl back up to where you're supposed to be. And so many of these things from department, different departments have helped do that in such a huge way. And so you want to continue it and you want to reward it. And, you know, and then at the same time, you have to look at the bigger picture as where, as well. And it is, it is very hard to look citizens in the eye sometimes when there's things that are needed in Cherokee Village, and you're not able to do that, but yet we can, you know, do other places here and there. And there's separate departments with separate needs and it's difficult. But, I don't know, y'all have my suggestion, does anyone else have a suggestion they want to throw forward?
Well, just other than reiterating, you know, I don't know where all the money stood, you know, before, you know, our financial situation changed with the lawsuit. But, you know, at the end of the day, the four 2023 vehicles completely got bought with the help of, you know, the aid of the state and whatever. And so we really haven't done any purchasing on our own much. And we know where we are right now, our back's against the wall right now. So, you know, I'm nervous to say yes on two. And, you know, with the whole one thing is, it's putting forth an effort to try to continue to do what we're doing for the city, but a little pause on money out of the reserve. So that's kind of where my head's at.
Well, and if we, if we can do the, if we do the one, if that's what the council feels more comfortable with, if we, if we do the one, and then we get toward the end of the year and happen to run across the, you know, maybe a demo rig with, you know, very low miles or, or something like that. I mean, you never know how that will work out, you never know. I mean, you can't bank on that, but if we run across something, there isn't nothing that says we can't come back and-
Absolutely.
Something in it towards the end of the year.
I agree with that, and I-
We were just saying, all the calling that, you know, the three of us has done and talking to people within several hundred miles of here dealers that deal in this specifically, there's like, well, the manufacturer's only allotted, you know, this many numbers of rigs this year, but they had this much demand. So it's, you know, the pickings are very slim.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve one to be paid out of the reserve fund.
I would second that.
FNBC Reserve?
Yep.
I would second that.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Ishmael, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to purchase one new police vehicle out of the, what do you want to set them on at? Fully equipped, you're looking about, what, 64, my number is right? Vehicle and equipment?
I think it was 66.
How do we wanna do that? I was pumping the numbers in while I was trying to, 66, 4.
About 68, and then you have your offset of whatever you can. And I would-
But we're gonna pursue the grants for the-
I would consider another, well, the chief has gotta manage his own fleet. I just would hope that the charger that's had-
I'm sorry.
A lot of Band-Aids on it, I would hope the charger would be.
2010?
But what is your fleet, do you manage?
So you wanna set, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll first. So the motion is to approve the purchase one new 2024 Chevy Tahoe with the cap at $68,000, including the-
Vehicle and equipment.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Satisfactory, okay. Motion by Mr. Ishmael, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to purchase one new 2024 Chevy Tahoe with the vehicle and equipment cap at $68,000 out of the FNBC general, or reserve fund. That was a mouthful. Roll call vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, we're down to comments, questions, city-related business? Is there anybody signed up, anybody got anything?
I do, if the citizens don't.
Yeah, Ms. Heather asked about something.
Did you?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I got something in mind. Besides my friend Grady.
Kelly Harrison, Trichanto Lane, I just had a quick question about the budget for the city's landscape and mowing grass. I know you had a budget for that, and you had some bids that came in, and then you decided to let that lay where it was.
Yes.
When is that gonna be brought back up? Because I'm a part of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and right now, our inspectors are out cutting grass and blowing leaves and picking up sticks. And I think that their time could be better well-spent helping us take care of the village and checking on homes and doing those things. So I appreciate everything you guys do, but I just have been wondering about that. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Oh, is that?
Your turn.
Oh, my turn? Okay, I just wanna make this for the record. At our working, and I'm reading because I got a lot in my brain, like I said earlier, so I just get organized here. At our working meeting Monday night, it was brought up that citizens had been inquiring about what's happening with the Sequoia Dam. And questions and suggestions got raised at the meeting, as well as a citizen feeling that, you know, he doesn't see the working together of the city and Sid. And I can't speak for all, but I'm for the city and Sid working together, in case anybody wondered that. And that there's communication and that we do all things possible that work for the benefit of Cherokee Village citizens and for the future of Cherokee Villages. So I took it upon myself to have a meeting with the general manager of Sid and voice my thoughts and state my position on the camaraderie I wish for, for the city and Sid, and to talk about some questions that had been brought up by council members and citizens. I really learned a lot from that meeting, and what I learned, and by no means is all the fine details, specifically, I first and foremost wanted to find out about the Sequoia Dam, because that's what got brought up at our working meeting. So what I found out was our dams are earth-based, which just means clay on clay on clay, and our spillways are concrete. The engineers began geotechnical drilling, which is, they bored six holes, three on the roadway and three at the bottom, if you drove by there and saw any of that happening. The purpose is to get state regulatory approval to put piezometers at Sequoia, which Lakes Omaha, Chanute, and Aztec already have these piezometers. Basically, those are six-inch PVC in-ground, 100 feet, to measure how much water flowing at the toe of dam. All toes need to be 20 feet, which is, I think you're a part of the backside of the dam. This is phase one of tackling the integrity of the Sequoia Dam. As and as stated at the Sid meeting, understanding and results of this study will not be done until early September, late as October. The whole point is, the whole point of this is that the, they're figuring out the integrity of the Sequoia Dam, and they got three years to get compliant with the state. So that's a lot, and, but I felt like I learned a lot from that. But at the end of the day, I believe at the Sid meeting, the engineers report got posted, and y'all by all means can find out more answers if you need more than that, what I've provided. But I asked if there was anything we as a city can help with. And I was told that once we know the results, once October, September, October get here, we know what the results are, we'll know what we can help with. And so meaning if there's a major cost to repair, major struggle with us needing to fix the Sequoia Dam, then we possibly as a council can prepare information for citizens to relay to our state representatives in asking for state funding. And that will be down the line, and I'll be the first to let everyone know when that needs to happen. Like I said, this is not all the fine details, but it helped me understand the timeline, and I just got a gist of the understanding of what's happening. I also got updated on a handful of other things. Bottom line is, is if anyone has any questions or concerns, I encourage you to email the general manager at CVSIDGM@gmail.com, or call Sid 870-257-2468. And I would just go straight to the stores and get your questions answered, in my opinion, is the best route. And I just wanna finish off by just saying that, you know, we as elected officials, our job is to encourage each other, our colleagues, our citizens, our contractors, our investors to, you know, work hard, volunteer more, be appreciative, you know, and, and I'm just putting forth the effort because it got brought up Monday night, and I just, I wanted to, you know, I want it to, I want people to see that we're up here to help and do right by the city. And it doesn't seem like that sometimes, and rhetoric happens and all the things. But I know for me, and I know I can speak for, you know, a lot of people up here, I don't wanna speak for anybody, but I feel like I know everyone's heart and everybody wants what's best for the citizens of this town. So I found out that information, I made my first step, and my part of me as a councilperson, working with Sid, to find out answers for the citizens.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Heather. Anything else? Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Ishmael, seconded by Ms. Heather, to adjourn, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, light sign, motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for being here.